Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a meeting of the Ontario City Council. In accordance with the Governor's declarations of emergency and stay-at-home orders, this meeting is being conducted by teleconference to limit in-person attendance. This meeting is being live broadcast on local cable Channel 3, streamed on our city's website, and the public can also dial in to listen to tonight's proceedings. We appreciate your understanding during this unprecedented time of social distancing under the stay-at-home order. All documents for public review are on file in the Records Management Clerk's Department. Anyone wishing to provide public comment or to address the City Council has been provided alternative means to do so, including US Mail, email, a website comment form, as well as the ability to dial in and record a three-minute voicemail. All public comments received by the established deadline for this meeting will be included as a part of the official meeting record. In accordance with state law, remarks during public comments are to be limited to subjects within the council's jurisdiction. Remarks on other agenda items will be limited to those items. And our first item of business is a roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Leon. As I read off each of your names, could you please indicate that you are here or present? Mayor Leon?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Dorseparata? Mayor Pro Tim Dorseparata?
You're muted, Debbie.
You're on mute, yeah.
Here.
Councilmember Wapner?
Here.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Valencia?
Present.
All council members are present at this meeting and participating via Zoom.
Then we will have a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Bowman.
That's all. Would you please join me in a pledge to our flag? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. We will have an invocation of sorts. In lieu of our invocation this evening and in recognition of the difficult times of not only fighting the health and economic impacts of COVID-19, but also grappling with the tragic death of George Floyd, I ask that we now take a moment of unified silence and reflection and pray for the unity of the nation, the people, and those of us here in the city of Ontario also. We pray for peace, we pray for unification, and we pray for love and peace with all of us. So if we would just take a 15-second moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. We did have a closed session this evening, and Mr. City Attorney, would you please provide a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken from closed session, direction was given.
All right, thank you. That takes us into public comments, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we have 16 email comments, which you were each provided copies of prior to the meeting, and we have one voicemail, which will be played now. I will note that this voicemail, the gentleman did not identify himself, but we will share his concerns with you, so here we go.
Yeah, I want to leave a comment.
Can you hear it?
I want to do the heavy traffic on Riverside Drive from Euclid, that's via the Home Depot, east to Millikan. The westbound has two lanes. We also need two lanes going eastbound. And also, southbound lanes on Grove Avenue from Riverside Drive needs to be expanded in both directions to have additional lanes. It's too narrow for the amount of traffic. And also Vineyard Avenue, South Riverside Drive, we need a road, two lanes to go north and south all the way to the county line. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our public comments.
Yeah, well, obviously, the south side of our city is developing quickly. So, thank you, and that takes us to the agenda review and announcements. Mr. City Manager, do you have any updated materials or correspondence?
Yes, sir, we do have two items, updates for the agenda tonight. The first is an urgency item related to the proclamation of local emergency that was initiated for a citywide curfew that began last evening at 6:00 PM and ran through 6:00 AM this morning. Pursuant to Government Code Section 8630, we are required that the council ratify that administrative action that was taken. In order to add it to the agenda tonight, forfeits vote is required to add this resolution to the consent calendar and a copy of that agenda report, and the resolutions have been provided to each one of you. If council is so inclined, we also have Police Chief Williams here, who can give us an overview of the activity over the weekend that led to yesterday's proclamation, as well as the department's response, and really outline how the community came together to support one another, and that ultimately resulted in a peaceful evening last night, if that's council's pleasure.
Well, I'd like to hear it, for sure, without any opposition to that. Where is the chief? Oh, there he is. Hi, Chief Williams.
Hey, sir, how you doing?
Good.
So, okay, well, yes, busy day today, sir. So, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Council, I'm here to let you know why the city went to a curfew and why we're on tactical alert. So, after the untimely death of Mr. George Floyd, peaceful protests throughout the nation turned violent. Some criminals hijacked those peaceful protests and started looting and rioting throughout the nation. Those events came to our local area, and we had to activate our mobile field force. Our mobile field force was sent to neighboring cities such as San Bernardino, Fontana, and Vancouver, Alberta twice. So as this was going on, I had our investigators look into what was going on in the city of Ontario, and then we learned of events that were planned, such looting events at our Ontario Mills Mall, planned events at our police department, our city hall, and at the same time, we had information that there was going to be a large gathering at the city to the north of us, up in the police department. So with all these events going on, the uncertainty throughout the nation, we got together and discussed a curfew. And I know a curfew is an inconvenience to our businesses and residents. We did that last night, and I want to thank the residents of Ontario, the business owners, because last night was a very, very quiet night in our city. We all came together, the men and women that were working all the streets had no issues with anybody. So again, I want to thank you all for that. But my department is still on tactical alert, and for those of you that don't know, a tactical alert is where all the men and women throughout the department, all the vacations are canceled, all the days off are canceled, and when we activated that, some people had to come back into the city to work. All police personnel are wearing uniforms and they're out in the city to protect this city. We're continuing to monitor events locally and nationally to figure out when we can go back to what we thought was normal, and we would all like to do that as soon as possible. But I can't say enough about the folks in this city. They've come together in this time. If you guys got any questions about anything, there I am.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for our chief. Chief, can you go ahead and explain about mutual aid? I know we sent a lot of our units out of the city. How do we get, do we get reimbursed for that? And if there was a declaration, do we get any federal money reimbursed to our city to back all of the money that is spent on overtime?
So, the mutual aid is a pact with all neighboring cities, and we're here to support each other. I do believe there's a reimbursement mechanism that goes along with that, but, you know, sir, I'm here to serve and we're here to protect everyone. So if that is happening and we get reimbursed, great, but if not, we've got a duty to protect all the city, but the region. And we've got great partners with the Sheriff's Department and all the cities in this county.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Pro Tim. Looks like our mayor, oh, there he is. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Wapner.
A question for the City Manager. If we ratify this, obviously, it's ratifying action already taking place. Can we include in the motion that we give the authority to call additional curfews if necessary, so the council doesn't have to come back together?
Yes, sir, if that is your desire, yes.
I don't know if that's already in the motion or not. But, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to include that in the motion, that we ratify the curfew that already occurred, and we authorize the City Manager to call any other curfews as needed.
Yeah, when I call for the motion, why don't you make it with those recommendations?
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak to this item before I call for the motion?
I'd just like to thank all of our wonderful officers for a job well done, and I'm so glad that everybody's safe. And thank you, Derek, for all your hard work. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, you beat me to it, Debbie. You know, our police officers, they have, our police department, from the top down, has a culture that really emanates from out there, from what just comes from them all over the community, that they are community members. And I love the way that they are not, I don't want to say confrontational, but just whenever they are come into something going on, I've seen it even our cops, officers on bikes, and when police officers arrive somewhere, people don't scatter and stuff. The police officers come and they just kind of join in. And I love that, the way that they're such a part of our community. I've been in restaurants, and police officers come in and people just welcome them in. There's just absolutely no difference when they come around. And I think that that's great. It just shows how they're all just, you've really done a good job. And I think just over the years, our police department has done a good job of making sure that there's a seamless relationship between the police and the people. And that's why we don't have these problems also. I do not believe we would ever have the kind of problem that we've seen happen recently because of the culture of our police department. You guys are absolutely awesome. Thank you, thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
So I'll go ahead and I will call for a
Having the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we add this item to the agenda as an urgency item.
I'll second. Okay, so, but you wanted to add some?
I think first, we need a motion to add it to the agenda, is that correct?
That's right. Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion to add to the agenda by Wapner, second by Valencia, a roll call vote to that.
Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dorseparata?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
And so, sir, we would add that to the consent calendar, and pursuant to the discussion that the council was having, and as City Attorney would note, the ordinance, or rather, the resolution does provide that type of flexibility for the future, so that this item would not necessarily have to come back to council.
That's correct. We did draft it to include that flexibility.
Okay. So?
The second item, sir, would be correcting a typo on item number 15 that you have on your open agenda administrative report number 15. That item corrects a typo of a reference date that is contained in the staff report to reflect September 30th versus September 20th, and also includes a reference to the Financial Services Department, or agency, rather, for inclusion in consideration of participating positions for this incentive. Other than that, that's it, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, and that takes us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the council requests an item to be removed from the consent calendar for a separate vote, and
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Moving second, any, oh, well, no, we have to have the roll call vote.
Thank you. Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dorseparata?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, then that moves us to public hearings. And item number 13, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Leon. This is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Toyota Ontario Business Park specific plan, generally located south of Harupa Street, east of Millikan Avenue, north of Francis Street, and west of the I-15 freeway. Notice of public hearing has been given, and affidavits of compliance are on file. There are no written communications, and we have received no voicemails.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. We will now open the public hearing and let the record reflect any written comments. And at this time, I'll ask the City Clerk to play for us any voicemails received.
Mayor, there are no voicemails, but you do have four pieces of correspondence that were provided in your packet. Two were offering to respond to questions, and two, I believe, were in opposition.
Okay, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a discussion or motion from the City Council?
The item.
I'll make a motion that we, oh, second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Bowman, second by Mayor Pro Tim Dorseparata. We'll, the motion has been made, and we will have a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor Leon.
Oh?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, sorry, I thought I said that, and then you said, "Thank you for saying that." I'm sorry. Okay, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dorseparata?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Unmute yourself, Jim.
Yes.
There you go.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. That takes us to our next public hearing, and item number 14, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Piemonte overlay of the Ontario Centre specific plan, generally located north of Concorde Street, south of Fourth Street, west of Via Alba, and east of Haven Avenue. Notice of public hearing has been given, affidavits of compliance are on file. We have no written communications and have received no voicemails.
All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'll now open the public hearing, let the record reflect any written comments received, and at this time, I'll ask the City Clerk to play for us any voicemails received.
Mayor, you have no written comments or voicemails on this item.
All right, then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a discussion or motion from the City Council. All right, then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a discussion or motion from the City Council.
Move the item.
Moved by Councilmember Bowman?
I have a comment.
Okay, before we go to the second, we'll hear from Mayor Pro Tim.
You know, I have a hard time with tandem parking, and I would like to make sure that we're always providing our residents with the best possible, most comfortable, quality type of living, and tandem parking to me just doesn't offer that, and so I'm glad that this is only 50%, but I really, I have a hard time with that. So I just wish that we would not, I think, when you tandem park, you end up having a street parked car, and then that ends up being, you know, a public safety issue, and then it ends up being a street sweeping issue, and so I just want to go on record that I'm not a tandem parking fan, so.
Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Bowman, and second by
Valencia.
Second by Valencia, and we'll have a roll call vote, Adam City Clerk.
Thank you. Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dorse Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
This motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. That takes us to administrative reports and item number 15, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is the second time that this item is before you as required under the statute. There is this first introduction, now there is the adoption of the resolutions pertaining to the two-year service credit enhancement program. What this does is allow us to restructure the organization in a strategic and least disruptive way in the interest of providing a continuity of service while we save significant amounts of money in the city's general fund owing to the COVID-19 pandemic's impact on that general fund. What you have in your staff report is a reflection of the fact that we have 321 eligible employees in this, in our employee population, who could theoretically participate in this program. If all of them did participate in this program, the total cost to the city would be $28 million. However, the annual savings to the city, if all of these bodies were to partake in the program, would be $51.6 million. So this is a good strategic, least disruptive way to allow for a downsizing of the organization in a way that reflects the policy parties of the City Council. As I mentioned in the agenda discussion at the very beginning of the meeting, there is a typo in the resolution referencing the window, opt-in window period as September 20th. That date is actually September 30th would be the closing of that window, and the second item would be a reference to including all of the classifications within the Financial Services Agency. Beyond that, if the council approves this item tonight, we would open the window and begin enrolling employees with the idea of closing that window and achieving the reduction enforced by October 1. If you have any questions, be happy to answer those, but that concludes my report, sir.
All right, so, thank you, and at this time, I'll entertain a discussion or motion from the City Council.
I'll make the motion that we go with that.
Second.
All right, motion approved by Mayor Pro Tim Parada, second by Councilmember Bowman, and we'll have a roll call vote for that, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Leon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dorse Parada?
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, and that takes us to Staff Matters, Mr. City Manager.
Nothing to answer, thank you.
I'll go to Council Matters, and we'll begin with Mr. Valencia.
I just want to thank our residents of Ontario for, they're not acting out like a lot of our other communities, and it says a lot about what Ontario is all about, says a lot about our residents of Ontario, says a lot about our children in Ontario, and, you know, I want to thank my colleagues as well. You know, as I was watching some of the tragic events happening in LA and Long Beach, they had an expert come out and talk about youth activity leagues that needed to be out to help connect the community kids with law enforcement, and I thought to myself, you know, my colleagues and I came up with an idea years ago to have that, and it's already implemented, so we're working towards getting everybody to move together, and with our chief, you know, kudos to our chief and our men and women in law enforcement, and even the fire department. We have a great first responder team that are out there in the community, and they're respected, and they take the time to stop and talk to the people in the community. So, you know, I just want to tell everybody, thank you very much, thank my colleagues, and thank our staff in Ontario as well. Job well done. We're all in this together, you know, with COVID and with what happened. So let's keep moving forward, and thank you very much.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir. Nothing tonight, thank.
Okay, Mr. Wapner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, something we all feel, I'm sure, is that we're being tested between these two crises that hit us. It's a test, and all we can all ask for is prayer, and that's it.
Thank you, Alan. Ms. Parada?
Um, I too would like to thank the Ontario residents. They found some very unique ways to keep communicating with each other during all of these events. The Ontario Heritage, the museums, the Kiwanis have all been doing fantastic Zoom meetings and keeping each other engaged, and that's exactly what we need to be doing, so thank you to all those groups. Thank you for some of the wonderful communication that's been going on Facebook. Everybody, I appreciate you not trying to put all those mad rumors out there and just really trying to be selective about what you post. It's been very, very helpful. So again, thank you to the Ontario community, and we'll just keep going forward and getting back together here.
Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome, sir.
I'd also like to thank the community, especially the community members that you never hear about that are kind of underground, doing everything they can to make sure that we have a stable, that we have stability in our city, and taking control of things that they can, and making, just making sure that Ontario remains safe. Instead of stirring the pot and getting everybody excited, there are some people in our community that you never hear about. They don't become famous on social media. They just do what they do by make, do, creating a sense of peace amongst those that they influence the most. And I've been able to talk to some people over these last, this last week especially, and I mean, there's nobody more than myself that absolutely abhors and decries the kind of injustice that you see when someone like George Floyd is, is, I can't even sugarcoat it, it's just, is just, you know, killed in public, and it's horrendous to see that, and the kind of outrage that happens nationally, and then it even becomes a local issue. There are many issues that we have to continue to work on in the United States of America, and I'm proud of the city of Ontario, and we've heard it already. We've all said, to a certain degree, that we believe that we have done as much as we can to make sure that we have the kind of community that appreciates everyone of every color and of every background, and it doesn't matter. And certainly, our safety service and our police department has been a big help. But once again, getting back to decrying injustice, making sure that people's rights are protected, even their right to peacefully protest. And I still know that there are many people working behind the scenes that we don't even know their names who are helping to maintain the peace in the city of Ontario. I just want to throw a shout out to my friend Nick Knack. I know you've worked real hard to keep the peace, and also Chief Williams. I know you've worked real hard to keep the, keep the peace, as well as all of your folks in the PD and all the staff of Ontario. This has been a city on alert, and we have really, they have done a great job, so thank you. We'd like to thank you for participating by TV, by web, live stream, or by phone, and we appreciate your interest, and our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, June 16. This meeting is now adjourned.